Fifteen, Planning Board is now in session. And we are televised.
Motion on the minute.
Motion on the men, motion by Pat, seconded by John. All in favor? Unanimous of four. Number two, eighty-one P plans, Robert Moore and Dill Street. Hi Pete.
Hi, how are you?
I'm good. I'll get a sign.
We'll check.
Just today's here.
Third.
Uh, sure.
Okay, good evening, my name's Peter Lavoy.
This is.
I work with Gary here in Helmand. I'm here tonight for this eighty-one P for Roseanne. So yeah, Dill Street runs along the bottom of the page here. We have three existing lots which are basically in, in green, well, in yellow. Goes around this one right here, the seventy-two F is one. And the existing lot for seventy-two E comes up over here, down and back. And then we have this small lot here which is seventy-two D.
Okay.
Basically what we're doing is we're going to subtract this portion here, parcel B, and give it to seventy-two F. And we're gonna cut this square off, parcel A, and give it to seventy-two D.
Just squaring them up.
You're squaring them off?
It's endorseable as submitted.
I haven't finished yet. Could you give me one minute?
There isn't any problem.
I just want to finish doing this, pass this on.
There's nothing.
Okay, I didn't give that to Karen. Thank you. All right.
Motion.
Any, any, uh, questions for them? Okay, Pat made a motion to approve the site plan. Seconded by John. All in favor? Unanimous of four.
I don't think we want some back.
Can she sign it?
Sign something, uh?
Nope, we got it.
You all set? Okay. You good to go here?
Good to go.
Number three, site plan forty-nine and a half, Summer Street, Fieldstone Properties Incorporated. All right, Mr. Chairman, the applicant requests a site plan approval to construct a stone product facility on the subject property. Such uses are permitted in the IA Central Industrial Zone District in which the site is, is located. The five thousand square feet, single-story building is being proposed with association, associated off-street parking. Fifteen hundred square feet of the proposed building will be used for the office space. Thirty-five hundred square feet balance of the building will be used for warehouse purposes. A twenty-three thousand, four hundred square feet with area behind the building is being proposed as a gravel material display and lay-down area. I have reviewed the site plan to find all, all, all applicable zoning requirements appear to be met. Therefore, I recommend approval for the site plan, subject to the relevant agency's comments. Let, sign Larry Duncan, Duncan down, plant, town planner. And we have the town engineer, Bonnie, do you want to go over?
All of, all of my comments were addressed.
Okay.
And Peter submitted a letter responding to all of my comments. I've reviewed everything that he's given me since I did my initial review and, and it's all set.
Okay, so that's good. And so, let's see, the fire department has no objection. The water department, they have a few questions, did you just talk with them? You all set with them, Peter?
I'll say.
Okay, and, uh, let's see, the highway surveyor satisfactory. The commission on, commission on disability. He had two issues, you discussed that with him?
Yeah, well, I haven't discussed it, but I did take care of it.
You did take care of it, all right. And I think that's, um, that's it. Okay.
Does it say there's anything more?
Do you want me to go through or are we all?
Yeah.
Yes, I do want you to go through, Peter, yeah.
Okay, for the record, my name's Peter Lavoy. I work with Gary here in Helmand. I'm here tonight representing Fieldstone Properties. With me tonight is Leo, he's the president of the company. The parcel's located on Summer Street, which runs along the bottom of the page. It's roughly four, four point three acres in size. Basically, it's a vacant lot. Benjamin Moore is right here. And then, I think it's Athletic Club, it's right there.
Midtown.
Huh, midtown.
Midtown, yeah.
Basically what we have existing is we have an existing paved area like this that connects to Benjamin Moore. So this is a vacant lot, but it is paved on this section here. The rest is undisturbed. We have sewer easements that run along the back and also the bike path runs along the back. So basically what we're gonna do is we're gonna close in this opening to a twenty-four-foot wide curb cut with thirty-foot radiuses at the entrance. Basically parking in the front in this location here. This, this building will have overhead doors in the front here, in the back here, and on the side. We have some, we have, we designated areas for paver laydown as well as some granite stone laydown area here. As you can see, the paved area stops right in this location here. The rest is gravel. Basically, what my client, what, what they do is they cut stone, natural stone, and they're gonna put them on pallets. So basically, this area's gonna be where the pallet laydown area is. We do have water coming off of Summer Street. I did revise that to a one-inch service, I mean, two-inch service. The water department wanted that. Sewer, we just met with the sewer board, I do have to make a change. They want me to take this sewer and tie into the twenty-four-inch line in the back. So I have to do that. I can't tie into this ten-inch raid here. So that would be a change. They don't want any of the stonework, because of the stones gonna be cut with water. None of that stone, that water that they use to cut the stone is gonna be put into the sewer. Leo told me that he has a recycling system to, to cut the stone, you know, to treat the water. So the only thing that's gonna be going in this sewer line is gonna be the bathrooms on the office side. For drainage, basically, we have one catch basin in the front here with a four-foot sump which goes to this drain manhole and then into a grass swale along the side. And then we have like a settling basin in the back here. Over here, we have, we take the existing building, we're gonna put it into an underground basin for recharge. And then that's gonna discharge into a grass swale and go into the settling pond in the back. Basically, this gravel area is gonna, there's a high point here. This gravel area is gonna just go into the two basins. We did do soil testing out there, it's all sand, so should be fine. It's basically it.
Okay. Have any comments from the board?
I guess I'm just, I'm interested in what the recycling system is and, and how we're going to make sure that any of the fines from that doesn't get into the drainage system.
I don't have, I don't have any details on the recycling system, but it will be inside the building.
It's inside the building?
It's inside the building, it won't be tied to the sewer, so it'll just recycle.
It recycles within itself, so it doesn't tie into the drainage either?
Correct, it does not tie in the drainage.
And the sewer line out the back, based on where they want you to go, does that cross the property line and go into the?
No, this property line goes down. It, it has two long fingers, this is just a portion of it. This is, this is basically an acre and a half of the overall four point three acres.
So that manhole's in the back of your property then?
That manhole is in the back of our property, yes, yep.
And the turning radius on the entrances are, are you able to get it, did you check that versus the type of, I would assume you're gonna get some pretty big vehicles in there, was that adequate in there?
Yep.
That was all I had.
Okay. All set?
No.
John, do I hear a motion? Joe?
Motion to approve the amended site plan.
Motion, uh, Pat.
Site plan, I'm sorry.
Second?
Yes.
Seconded by Pat. All in favor? Unanimous of four.
Sign it next time you take the Mylar updated.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, we need to show, show the sewer change anyways, yeah.
Change, yep, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Moving right along. Number four, amended site plan, two ninety-six Main Street, JR's Diner. Okay.
Do you want me to read the report?
I just, who's going?
I think the applicant's here.
No, Peter, the applicant's here.
Oh, okay, all right. All right, Mr. Chairman, the applicant remen, requests amended site plan approval to follow far a change of use on the subject property. The new use of the existing building is to be a restaurant. The building has most recent been used for an office, professional office use. The proposed forty-seat restaurant will occupy one thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine square feet of the three thousand nine hundred and sixty square feet building. The one thousand two hundred and forty-two square feet is to be leased as office space. The remaining four hundred and forty-eight square feet is comprised of common space, restrooms, and corridors. The existing off-street parking lot across Main Street from the site remains associated with the subject property. It is to be retained and will be upgraded, restriped, and meet current standards. All applicant zoning and site plan requirements appear to be met. Therefore, I recommend amended site plan be approved, subject to the relevant department. Respectfully, our town planner, Larry Duncan. Bonnie has, has no comment, conservation agent has no comment. And, uh, let's see, the fire department, fine. The water department has, uh, approved for application to which water, you were all set. Did you have a letter from the water, you're all set with the water department?
Well, their, their engineer's aware of it, he isn't able to be here tonight, so.
They cannot be here?
So the.
The engineer.
Oh.
The engineer can't be here, he's aware of this, but hasn't had time to change the Mylar, he's been out of the country, so.
Okay.
My suggestion in the end would be approval, subject to the Mylar getting updated.
All right.
As soon as it's updated and you can sign off.
Highway surveyor, all, I received the above, met much of following, all road opening permits and trenches have been met. Concrete in same thickness as existing, okay. And the commission for disabilities?
Yeah, again, both their engineer and their architects aware of all of this. Just for the planning board's purposes though, I did check with the building commissioner and, uh, item number two on the commission on disabilities list about change of use.
Yeah.
It may be a change of use under zoning requirements, but it's not a change of use under the handicap accessibility requirements, so no changes are necessary to the outside of the site.
Okay, all right.
As per John, yesterday, I just talked to him.
So the exterior ramp as it is is compliant?
Well, it, yeah, it's grandfathered, so to speak. There is no change of use, they don't have to make any change to that.
All right.
It's functional and it works.
Yes, okay. Thanks, yeah, better way to put it.
Okay, please state your name.
I'm Brent H. George.
Okay.
My name is Christina Ferretta.
Okay.
That is the proprietor and owner of JR's Diner.
I'm sorry?
That is the owner and proprietor.
You're the owner and the proprietor, all right.
Tell us what you're trying to do.
What are you trying to do? Give us.
Relocate the business, basically.
Where was it before?
It's in Nathaniel Plaza.
East Main Street?
East Main Street.
Oh, okay, I know where that is.
And the present location or the location that you're looking to go to?
Is two ninety-six South Main Street.
No, Main Street.
I'm sorry, Main Street.
Main Street.
Yeah, they're on East Main now.
Two oh six East Main Street now.
Two ninety-six.
No, no, they're, they're on. They're at Nathaniel Plaza.
Which is there now?
Nathaniel Plaza.
No, what he's asking is what's this building?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking. It's been.
He was most recently a dentist, Oxford Dental, and a chiropractor. A chiropractor's been there for some, you know, some amount of time.
And they're, I think, I don't know if it's vacant yet or not, but it will be soon.
It is, the dental office has moved out.
Yeah.
Was the dental office at one time?
Yes, Oxford Dental.
Same side of the street.
Is this where Julian was, the chiropractor?
Yes.
It's his building, okay.
That, the last page is the aerial that gives you a little better.
Yeah, you really can't tell much on that one.
No. It's one.
No, last page. But, uh, I'd recommend approval, subject to the Mylar being updated to show the, uh, the comments we mentioned in the review.
What did you say, Larry?
Yeah, it's, it's a simple change of use from, from our standpoint, so I'd recommend approval of, uh, of the amended site plan, subject to the Mylar getting updated to address the issues that we talked about just now, so. And they should be able to do that in just a few days, so I'll be calling you to make a special check.
Is there any other comment, Joe?
Yeah, I'm just looking, where's, where's the entrance to the parking lot on the, across the street?
Joe, the, uh, the existing curb cut across the street is just one wide curb cut. It's never, it's been that way for a number of years. And there's in fact an easement over the westerly portion of that that had seen some contentious issues years ago. But that's being retained and will remain unchanged. So the parking spaces will face generally east, along the east side of the space. The curb cut is, is just a wide, open curb cut for the whole, the full length. You can drive over the easement portion, which is actually over here. For, and it goes, the easements in favor of this lot. And then the rest of the parking lot function has its own separate access in a sense. And that functions entirely separately from, from the easement.
Does the guardrail serve any purpose then? Does it grade the same through, at that guardrail point? Yeah.
That's part of, that's part of the easement agreement, is that it have a physical barrier and, yeah. It never made sense to me, but that's the way they've, they've had it in their agreements for a number of years.
Well, I'm just worried about, we, we show pavement in that back to create a parking spot. And I'm not sure how somebody gets out of that parking spot.
Well, there's, there's a twenty-four feet.
Yeah.
Behind, behind the spot, so that's enough room to back out. And where they can't go north, they have to back out and then come back toward Main Street. So there's enough room to do it. It's unlikely that it's gonna get used that much, but to, to square off the parking lot and make it a legitimate parking space.
Well, is this the property line back here? Behind it?
Where, where the, where the X is, yeah.
Why, if, if we're doing paving in there, why couldn't we at least do a five-foot bump out into that area so that you could back somebody out and then?
They could do that. They could do that.
Look, I mean, I'm not, I'm not talking too much, but I, if we're gonna, if we're gonna square this out and put the pavement in there, I don't think putting a, a five-foot bump out into that area, you know, over the twenty-four feet so somebody can turn around a little bit easier would be.
Not a problem.
Yeah, but they can do that, so we'll just make sure the engineer knows when he updates the Mylar.
All right.
My only other problem, and we've done this similarly to other sites, is this seems to be an awfully large curb cut. I know the car wash, I know the bar, I, I know the, the place across the street. Every place else, we've, we've asked that, you know.
Well, the only problem with changing the curb cut is that because of that.
We don't have a curb cut, I was asking to add one.
Well, it, there is one, it's just overly wide. There's a, there's a curb. So the, the problem is, because of that easement and the requirement to keep the guardrail and keep that easement separate, there's really no functional way to, to put another, uh, island or median coming out there that, that would, that would be safe. So I, I'd recommend we just leave it the way it is.
All right, Larry, just back me up for a second. From the guardrail to the corner, is it sixty-two feet or is it from opening to opening sixty-two feet?
Yeah, sixty-two feet, the frontage of the lot is sixty-two feet.
That's the full frontage.
From here.
We don't know the.
From one end to the other.
And, and the. We don't know the width of the, uh, of the easement, so to speak, or the guardrail?
You can, you can sort of figure out, it's twenty-four plus eight, plus eighteen, minus the sixty-two.
But the curb cut actually is right here, it doesn't, he's not showing the eastern edge.
Twenty feet.
There, there's a curb cut at that parking lot, at that parking space.
Okay.
So the curb cut starts here and ends here.
Just show me over, I, I, I'm losing you over there, can you just show me right here?
Right where you have it.
Okay.
There's, there's a curb cut here and there's a curb cut here.
I thought your, your reference was, okay, all right, that's, I understand that.
All right, forget it now.
Okay, yep.
What's the pleasure?
Again, I wanted to be consistent because other parking lots, we've asked that they close them up because there's no.
Yeah, for some of the whole section of the parking area.
Right, and that's what I was misunderstanding, okay.
We approve the site plan.
Motion made by John to, uh, to approve the site plan, seconded by Joe.
I'll second, yeah.
All in favor? Unanimous of four.
Subject to. Yeah, subject to the one change with the parking lot.
Subject to the parking.
And the other changes.
And all the other changes, I think Larry has those.
Yeah, Larry has.
Okay.
I'll be back Thursday. Okay, I won't be here tomorrow, so.
Thank you.
So you'll be with Larry?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, good luck.
Right along.
All right, let's see what we have here. ZBA appeal of Planning Board decision, one fifty East Main Street, O'Reilly Auto Parts. Okay, and what's the story with that, Larry? Anybody here?
Uh, no.
I think it's a referral.
No, this is a, this is the appeal of your denial of the site plan.
Right.
And I thought you'd want to see the packet that went to the ZBA. Plus, normally you would be commenting on a ZBA agenda item. So I wanted to clarify what, if any, written statements you wanted me to send and whether or not any of the members are gonna be able to attend the ZBA meeting.
Okay.
Since this is an appeal of your, of your decision.
Yeah.
And the ZBA is next, uh, next Thursday, the twelfth.
Yeah, I'll, I'll try to attend, but I'm not sure right now.
Okay.
I don't know if, certainly if any other board member wants to attend, I would, I would suggest they attend.
If I'm, I don't have anything pressing, I can attend with you, Joe, if you wanna.
Well, send us an email, Larry, with the particulars of the day, specific time.
Yeah, I just didn't know if the board wanted a forward memo that memorates the concerns.
We could just construct a memo tonight so that at least it's, it's the full board voting on that memo and then, you know, if one of us can attend or more than one, that's great, but at least we have something officially in the, uh, in the records. I, I, I mean, I know we had notes from our last decision, but I, but I think the, you know, the memo should go back to the zoning board that the planning board has, uh, turned down the site plan due to, and I guess I'll throw out words and people can fill in as they want, but significant concerns about, um, safety of vehicles entering, entering and leaving the site. We have significant concerns about impacts to traffic in.
Free Street?
On, along Free Street and, and, and the neighborhoods in that area that we don't feel are needed. And I think we have considerable concerns about impacts to Main Street traffic, which the town has, has said is, is bad and to, and to approve a plan or to force a plan that, that in fact forces two left-hand turns onto Main Street. If people want to get down to Hamilton Street, to me, makes no sense. So I, I think that, you know, those are the three things that come to mind to me first in terms of, of what we want to get across.
I, I think the major objection is the prohibition of being able to exit onto Hamilton.
Exactly.
Yes.
That's really the primary concern. Because I think that this is probably, gosh, the third site plan for this site is. And I think they were all consistent.
Yep.
Of having four curb cuts, if you will, two on Hamilton, two on Free. And I think that, that the major objection really.
Well, that is, the, I think the outcome is the three things that I said, but that's the major objection, yes.
But I think if you get into the ramifications of traffic on, 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 on East Main Street or what have you, that's really not what drove, drove the discussion, the decision of denial. It was more.
Hamilton Street.
Hamilton Street was, was really what drove.
Yes.
So I, I, I think to stay consistent, I think you stick with the observation, if you will, that the several other site plans preceding this one, okay, always showed four entrances, exits, two on Hamilton, two on Free. So I, I think that's being very fair when we look at the history of this one site. And arguably, I understand that it's, it's the own applicant that went to the zoning board seeking relief that caused this. However, absent of that, we wouldn't have gone to the zone, or he wouldn't have gone to the zoning board. And to this day, we would have the four, so I think that's what you're basically, what you want to keep.
Well, yeah, I, yeah, that, that is the, I mean, I think the outcome of that is, is the three issues that we had of why we couldn't approve it without having the.
Correct.
Entrances on Hamilton Street is that, that they impact neighborhood in traffic.
Exactly.
You know, safety of all that traffic by Free Street.
Right.
And then causing all the additional traffic to then one exit, I mean, but, but the, the issue is.
Obviously, if, if we're given the opportunity to allow someone to travel or exit from that business down Hamilton Street, the hope is that, you know, one in every six cars won't go onto East Main.
Right.
That's really the hope.
Right.
But now, we're, we're virtually forcing them.
To go out to Free, East Main Street and Free Street. Which is gonna end up on Hamilton Street.
Based on that, Larry, and then we can send it out to all of us and we can comment back and then have that forwarded onto the zoning board and then.
I'll do that, I'll do that Thursday, I'm not here tomorrow, so, all right.
Okay, thanks, guys. All right. Let's see. Okay, proposed subdivision regulation for amendments, all right. Is that you, Bonnie?
It is me.
Okay.
Um, if I understand correctly, you've reviewed these at a previous meeting.
Yes, they're, we, we did.
These issues came up with respect to some specific sites over the last couple of years. So with Larry's help, I, you know, put this language together in the hopes that we might tighten up the regulations a little bit to deal with stormwater issues from active construction sites and, and new development that may be potentially impacting a burs. Do you want me to?
He's also referenced eighty-one P lots.
There is not a reference to eighty-one P lots.
We are also discussing that as well, so I just.
That was the zoning amendment.
Okay.
That's why, in fact, that's why we did that as a zoning amendment.
To change.
To get to the eighty-one P lots, this deals with subdivision lots.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Good, Bonnie, I'm sorry.
That's okay. So the, um, so the article that was prepared, as I understand, was that the board had some comments, changes in wording, that you wanted to, um, say, under subsection two Q, drainage, drainage calculations showing all site improvements exceed the Massachusetts stormwater standards to the greatest extent practical? I, um, I agree with the spirit of that comment, but I think we need to be precise about how they should exceed. And Larry and I had talked about this, we, um, probably could address that in our stormwater bylaws by making a change to the stormwater bylaws if we want to strengthen our stormwater regulations for the town. There is, there is no reason that the town can't enforce stricter standards, but it need, but I think the bylaw is probably the way to do that. Um, I'd like to hear the opinion of this board, though, on that.
My only hesitation, and obviously I want to do it to the benefit of the town in, in, in the most efficient and understandable way. I just sometimes, I, I don't want to get inundated with having fifteen different articles to address a problem. That's my only, my only hesitation, if you will. And sometimes, if one fails, then it, the other one, it becomes irrelevant because one of them didn't pass. So if there has to be tied together, then absolutely. If there's a way to incorporate it into one single article?
Well.
If there isn't, then there isn't.
I don't think there is.
There are three, there are three different levels of jurisdiction, obviously. The zoning stuff was necessary to deal with the individual lots created by eighty-one P. This would seem to make sense, generally speaking, doing it in the subdivision regulations because it requires the developer to exceed the state standards to the extent practicable. because it requires the developer to exceed the state standards to the extent practicable. So if it's not practicable, that is, if you can't physically do it, or if it's so exorbitantly expensive, it doesn't make sense to require some poor guy to do something that's costing millions of dollars, then you don't have to require it, or he wouldn't have to comply. But this still puts the onus on the developer to make an attempt to certainly meet the stormwater requirements, which you're going to have to anyway, but exceed them, but do it in the context of the subdivision review.
The problem with that is, in what way do they need to exceed the Mass stormwater regulations? There's a requirement for eighty percent total suspended solids removal. So if they have eighty-one percent, is that acceptable to the board? I mean, it's, you know, it needs to be defined a little bit better exactly what part of the standards, because there are ten...
This is why you're referring back to the stormwater.
Exactly, because there are ten stormwater standards. So which part of the stormwater standards are we referring to? Is it all of them? And so to what extent do we want them to do more than what the state standard is?
See, I guess I would say that you would want to...
To that point, is it better for us to quantify it with a percentage? In other words, improve it by fifteen percent? Is it better to quantify it as a percentage?
No, that wouldn't apply to all of the standards across the board.
Of the ten... Hold on one second. I just want to get a better understanding. Of the ten standards, I'm assuming that there's probably more significant than others. Normally in standards, not all of them are specific to what we're trying to do, or maybe I'm wrong.
They are, actually. We apply all ten standards. When I do a review of a site, I apply all the ten standards. But the big ones that stand out are the eighty percent total suspended solids removal and also the sizing of the drainage structures and the water quality volumes that are used to develop your drainage system. So again, on that issue, do... Are we asking, instead of a half an inch of stormwater, are we asking for an inch of stormwater? Are we asking for them to design a basin to be fifteen percent bigger? And why? What would be the reason for doing that? So that's why I think it's probably better to address this if we have specific standards that we want them to improve upon and do it through the stormwater bylaws.
Maybe that means we need to take a look at the stormwater bylaw and all of those things.
Right, we do, I think. But the way I was looking at this, and the reason the draft had said what it said the first time through, it didn't say exceed the standards until you guys brought that up. The reason I thought it made sense to have this in there is not to require that they meet the state stormwater standards, because they're required to meet the state stormwater standards already. What this does is facilitate a review at a stage that may be more advantageous to both the town and the developer to make sure that they're showing at a subdivision level review for you guys, so Vani can review and report on that, that they're going to conform to the standards. And that's the only reason, from my standpoint, that that was in there, not that it was imposing any more or different standards. The standard's already there, so I would suggest you just go back to what it said in the first place, and that they're... Part of their submission is to show their calculations as to how they think they're going to conform to the state standards, and let it go with that. Because then you add to that, and do not result in any runoff erosion, blah, blah, blah. And we took out the language referring to the MS four permit, because it doesn't exist yet. And even when it does, you probably don't want to refer to it directly anyway. So my suggestion now...
I actually... Can I make a comment about that? I actually think that that language should stay, because...
You're the one that said you wanted to take it out.
No, well, because the MS four permit is specific to the town's municipal system. It's different from the RDA that is coming that will be private properties. So anything that enters the town's system, once the permit is final, belongs to the town. And so if we don't hold developers to a certain standard of what they're discharging into our system, then we can inherit problems from those sites.
This was the area that started my conversation down this path, in that when the town gets the MS four permit, I was... Because at the end of the day, that permit will be judged on the water, on the quality exiting the site, and not on any one particular thing. And I was hoping to be able to push the limit of what people tying in would do, such that the water quality as it exits, the burden on the town is less, because now I'm at ninety percent total suspended solids from this person entering it, and the town doesn't need to be at eighty on theirs, because this, as people enter it, at ninety. So that was how I started down on this path of why I wanted that in there, was that, and I know other cities and towns have done this, where they've really forced phosphorus removals and things like that onto people tying in that are much higher than what their permit is at, so that when they have to do their permit, and when they have to look at what they have to do in and of themselves, they have to do perhaps a little bit less, depending on what those tie-ins were. So that's what I was trying to get to in here, and I don't know whether this is, you know, whether we can specify that in here or not. But if this isn't the place, and it needs to be in the stormwater regs, then I think we should do that.
Yeah.
I agree with you, Joe.
I think we should look at that.
Yeah, the general bylaw would apply to everything immediately. There's no grandfathering from it. So, yeah, doing this right now seems premature before the permit. But the idea, again, the idea of referring to the state stormwater standards was more for convenience during the review process. It's the same, it's analogous, at least, to the zoning amendment that we made on requiring that retaining walls over four feet in height have an engineered plan submitted with a site plan. Because the building code required it, has always required, or has required it for a number of years, and the building commissioner now will require it. It's just that in the past, the former building commissioners weren't requiring it, and it was getting lost in the shuffle. So we required it as part of the submission for the site plan review to put everybody on alert, including the developer, that they needed to do it. This is analogous to that.
I'd also like to point out, we've kind of gone down a different path. The intent of this revision to section Q was that adjacent and downgrading properties wouldn't be adversely affected by new development. That was my original intent.
That's a good intent.
Well, and that's why, I mean, if that's the place to do that, yeah.
Right, right.
And I'd rather look at the stormwater regs and do it correctly.
Yeah, I mean, do we reference the town stormwater regs in here in terms of Massachusetts stormwater standards? Town stormwater regulations is the reference. And then when that gets tied into the permit, it's already tied in, because we're indicating in here that it has to meet the town stormwater regulations.
We said exceed.
And then we'll deal with taking a look at the stormwater regs downstream here. We can schedule that and try to go through that. But that's what I was trying to get to. It was an opportunity when I saw this, just to try to get to the extent possible minimizing. And I think looking at the stormwater regs is probably good, because although this addresses subdivision plans, I think site plans coming up that are tying in, we should be looking in the same sense, that if we can get any new site plans to exceed the town's permit, it only helps the town at the end of the day in terms of meeting the overall permit requirements. So that would be the place to do that, would be in the town stormwater.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I'd agree with that, yeah.
Well, so we can take another crack at that paragraph and bring it back next time.
Yeah, that's fine.
There was a cleaned-up version that I just handed out, panned it out. I thought it was attached to the packet, but it wasn't. Sorry.
Yeah.
Rezone, no, it's out.
Yeah, I don't know that we had anything else in any other sections. I thought we were okay with... Just the guess of changes.
Larry, do it number seven.
Yeah. Just turn the heat down a little bit.
Leave it on.
Okay. Okay, number seven, possible rezoning, eight point seven acres on Medway Street, RB, and IB, and CB.
Larry.
Larry.
As I'd mentioned to you individually earlier, we'd had interest in redevelopment of both the Alamo most recently, but in the past also for Maria's Restaurant. The Alamo is more urgent, it seems like redevelopment interest. And as you can see, the second page is the map. Lot sixty-three that's circled is owned by the Alamo property owner next door. The Alamo Restaurant's on sixty-two A. Sixty-three has a little house on it. Left to their own devices, any rezoning that they could propose would be to request that lot sixty-three be rezoned to IB, because that's the adjacent non-residential zone. But if you turn the page, my suggestion was that the planning board put forth a zone change that would rezone all of those lots to CB. The Cornerstone property is already developed. That use is allowed in CB. They already have their special permit. Maria's Restaurant on lot fifty-one at the corner of Birch and Medway has been non-conforming for years. So anything they wanted to do there was going to create problems for them in terms of having to get special permits and variances. So rezoning all of this would get rid of all of the industrial zone that's been floating there and put it all in CB and make sense out of it. So I would ask that the board consider sponsoring the article that shows up on the first page.
Sixty-one's the only one that's residential, now?
No, I think sixty-three is too. I think sixty-three...
Well, sixty-three is, but there's no one there. It's a vacant house. I went by the last night.
Sixty-one is...
Tried to rezone that section a couple of years back.
But I think, yeah, there was some change, but it involved industrial and some other lots, so that was the problem. But I think Chairman Meekley's house is on sixty-one.
Sixty-one, right.
Sixty-one A is Cornerstone.
Yep.
And then going across the street, fifty-one is Maria's Restaurant.
Well, that's what I'm saying. The only one that is residential is sixty-one. It's Chairman Meekley's house.
Yes, his house, yeah.
To me, I would rather have it zoned...
CB.
Yeah, CB than residential, as far as me, but I guess that's the only...
But the applicant right now can only request a zone change on his own property. And it seemed to make sense that you guys sponsored this article.
Yeah, I think it makes sense for the town to do that. I mean, I'm just thinking, if Mr. Chairman Meekley is in favor of it, I think in terms of it going to town meeting, we have a much better chance. So it would be, you know, it may be worthwhile to just reach out and just see what his feelings are.
Yeah, we'll all talk to him, yeah, and explain it.
But other than that, I believe it's the right thing to do in terms of town.
Well, I just wanted to start with you guys first, to see if it even makes sense.
I think it makes the most sense.
It does make the most sense, so...
It actually would affect his property less than it's affected right now, because residential use is in a CB zone, go by the RA standards and not the RB standards.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah.
No, I think it's worthwhile.
All right.
Right, thank you.
Take care of that, Larry. And let's see. Okay, possible zoning tech amendment of the farmer's market uses.
Yeah, we had sent out the working draft that the board had requested.
Yes.
And to the extent that I may have left some things off that I shouldn't have.
All right.
Jen and crew are here, and I'd suggest they bring a list of the things that they had expected to see on the list that I may have left off.
There is a list, Larry. Oh, okay.
Down at the bottom in the definition.
Down on the bottom here, further adding.
But before we get to that, just to bring everybody up to speed, because not everybody, well, maybe everybody is seeing it. The changes that the board had asked that I include would be to clean up the use regulation schedule so that footnote doesn't appear in the commercial zones, because the whole purpose of arranging things this way is so that farmers' markets are still allowed as they are now in all those non-residential zones, except the CA. So having the footnote that says they need a special permit didn't make any sense, because it says P principal permitted use. So I got rid of the footnote number twenty-five in the commercial zones. The board was concerned about the RB zone and was leaning toward RA zoning only for a special permit for these uses. So I changed that, so it shows as a zero now, where previously it had been an S with a footnote of twenty-five. There were questions about how to regulate the hours. There were questions about how to provide for the outreach activities. So the hours I actually included in the days of the week and when it occurs is in a new three seventeen five. Farmers' market may only be held on Saturdays. That was one of the comments that a couple of the board members had made in the months of June through October, and shall not be held on state or federal holidays. Specific dates and hours determined when you issue the special permit. However, in no case shall the hours commence before eight or extend beyond four, including setup, tear-down, and site cleanup. So it seemed like you needed to have, you know, the brackets there for the entire operation. And then within that, one site may, you know, dictate that the hours be different, but you would determine that at the special, at the actual public hearing. So the overall bracket it ends for setup and tear-down, maybe should start at seven or seven-thirty. Maybe it should go at a four-thirty or five, but that's...
No, we stayed...
This is what I thought you had wanted.
What's that?
We agreed to eight thirty.
We gave you the extra hour.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. We don't need seven to...
We're not hollers. We gave you something.
Yeah.
But at any rate, that overall bracket was there so that it would guide the board at the time it was getting the special permit issued. And then in the list, one of the, a couple of the members had commented that referring to having vendors or growers be within a fifty-mile radius, from a practical standpoint, that wasn't going to be enforceable anyway, so we took that language out altogether. That's why it reads the way it reads now. And then the actual list, because of the confusion we had at our last conversation, last meeting, I took the homemade phraseology and put it before the colon instead of after the colon in the sentence, so that anything in the list is going to be homemade, whether it's bread, candy, chocolates, whatever, coffee. So that's how it ended up that way. But I may have left something out of the list that you all and they all intended to be in there or thought was going to be in there, so that's why I asked them to come and, you know, bring a list of the things that I may have goofed up on.
So is there anything that we left out of this list that you see on the bottom? Does everyone have a copy of?
We do, yes.
Okay.
We did start... I'm going to go back and forth between. We did send what we had thought was a draft of what we thought was missing, but I don't know if you have that.
Just tell us what you think.
Well, it starts with, we were asking for RB because it includes one set of the schools. It was never intended for anything other than that, because the two parcels are in different zones. Stacy and Memorial are in RA, the high school, and Brookside are in RB. So if, you know, we were only... That's the only purpose for it. And even by adding RB, it really doesn't encompass a whole heck of a lot more properties. I mean, there are really only forty-four properties out of the entire base of the town that are included when you add in the five acres. So while I understand the need to protect the town's best interests, in order to at least, if something goes... If, I mean, if we look at doing something construction-wise to Stacy in the next five years and we have to move, you're looking at at least close to a year to amend everything through a town meeting to add it. So that is a concern with not having RB at least be available. I'm not saying it's going to be accessed, but that's... We can't move, the other schools are not in the RA district, which is why we ask to be in both RA and, or the ability to be in RA or RB. We would still obviously have to come back to you to do a new special permit. But if we add, if we have to go back through town meeting to amend the zoning bylaw and then come back to you again for a special permit, you're now pushing it out. And if, obviously, we know when we're about to do a school construction project, but you never know. We didn't, you know, it's...
I understand what you're saying. I do get what you're saying.
I don't want to overreach the bounds, but those two school properties...
You're talking Memorial School?
Memorial and, Memorial, Stacy, and Town Park are a parcel. They are RA. They are RA ands.
They're RA, those are-
Brookside and the high school. And then if you go so far is Woodland, which obviously is not-
Not ready yet.
Not ready and wouldn't be all great places to go anyway. Those are RB. So that's, that's the first concern. And we weren't aware that there was a concern on that. That was, that was a-
On the RB?
It was just removed on our new copy. So, I mean, the next, I mean-
Let me just ask a question now. You, you really talked about Memorial School during, during the farmer's market there, which was-
Memorial or Stacy in, in that parcel, yeah. Because that shares the parking lot, of course. That's the intention, but-
Okay, so would that be in the, the intention?
All right.
Yes, ma'am.
That's why I think we-
Okay.
That's the intention.
All right, that's what I wanted.
Immediate intention, intention.
That's what I wanted to know, if that was immediate, okay.
Above and beyond that, three seventeen fifteen, I'm all right with saying Saturdays. I don't know that I'm okay with saying June through October because there are markets that run in the winter and that has always been our intention. It would not be, most likely, in an RB or RA zone. It would be within a commercial property. It's a third one, but-
Whatever you do in a commercial has no application to this.
But it, but there are properties that are within, like, Century House, which is not-
I don't, I don't, I don't think you have a prayer on that, okay? We're, we're asking to put this in a residential zone. I think we need to limit the amount of time as it is, you know, to me, we would never allow anyone else to do this. You don't allow this type of usage in a residential zone. I, I think the board is going over backwards to try to find a way for this to be there, but I don't think anybody should be encumbered fifty-two weeks out of the year to do that.
I'm, I'm, I'm not saying it has to be fifty-two, but I mean, May-
I think June through October is, is certainly enough time.
But there are other, I mean, we could start May.
I'm sure there are, but I don't know where they are and, and they may be in commercial zones. You're asking for this in a residential zone.
So, so you're June to October?
Currently.
Currently. And so are you, you're asking for more than October at this time? Is that what you're asking?
We're looking to potentially, yes, because we could start as early as May if we were able to actually go with farmers who are able to sell plants. And that's, you know, so now we're-
I don't think these are the spots to do that, then. I, I think you need to find another spot if that's what you're trying to do.
I, I would love to.
I, I, but that's not, I, I can't, I can't help you with that, but I'm telling you, this isn't the place to do it. I, I can't impact people that are in a residential zone to this extent. I, I don't, I don't think it's fair to them.
The next part of it is the state and federal holidays that we're not allowed to be open that does impact us because it is the Fourth of July, there are, there, I believe it's Bunker Hill Day and there, you know, there, there's other holidays in there and-
I could care less about the holidays.
The holidays don't make, yeah.
I don't, yeah, I don't, I like, you know, that's-
That's fine with me. I don't have a problem with the holidays. Because everybody's out and about in the holidays, that sort of thing. The farmer's market is, is, is a lot, is a one place a lot of people really like to go to during that time. So we could strike that.
There's only a possibility of one holiday, just so we know that.
Who can't let?
Yeah, it's not a big deal.
Yeah, it's, that's why it's like, but it does impact every couple of years, so why?
We can strike that, Jen. All right.
So we had talked specifically about yarn, which got lost.
Okay, I don't have a problem with that.
We have seedlings but not plants, so we struck seedlings and changed it to plants.
Okay.
Packaged manure, which we talked about, was missing. I tried to just do gardening supplies.
Okay.
Pickled vegetables.
Doesn't it qualify into just vegetables or no?
No, because it's-
Are those jarred pickled vegetables you're talking about? Yeah, yeah, okay.
So it is separate.
So, so wait, hold on a second. So the board, the board had wanted to keep yarn in?
I'm sorry, Larry?
The board had wanted to keep yarn in?
Yeah, I'm putting yarn in.
Oh, that's part of-
And plants?
And the plants, that's, that's-
Plants, seedlings, yeah.
Yeah, that's kind, that's part of a-
Because the seedlings is in the-
They're grown on a farm.
Absolutely, Jen, yeah.
Well, let me, let me try to clarify this. If you keep talking through what they say, it's hard to keep up. So the manure is all right?
Yarn is fine. Plants, seedlings are fine.
You know, everything is in a jar, so you know-
To me, that's under salsa, but again, I'm not gonna split here with it. It's all the same to me.
Right.
Just, so to my thinking, it was already there, but-
Yep, well, that's why-
You want it spelt out? No problem.
Okay, so what, after, after pickled veggies?
It's like pasta sauces. To me, it, it doesn't have to say it.
Well, that's the clarification.
If it's pickled, if it's in a jar, it's, it's in it to me, but-
Right.
Right, and see, that's part of why what we sent-
You want it spelt out? I'm not a-
No, I don't, but here's the problem is it-
But we're going to.
When, 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 when you, when you say these products and then a product isn't included, which is why in our version, we added ancillary products. Because you may say honey or maple syrup, but my maple syrup vendor doesn't just sell maple syrup. He sells maple syrup, he sells maple cream, he sells maple candy, he sells all that. So as long as our, as long as it is clear that it is those products and the ancillary products that, that go with it, then we have-
Right, I, I understand that, Jen.
Well, the reason they were trying to be specific in the list is because this isn't the state fair. This is a farmer's market in a residential neighborhood.
Right.
Okay, so yarns, pickling?
Right.
Okay, so you wanted to add pickled vegetables?
Seedlings, manure, yarn, pickling, yep.
Okay.
What after that? You had more, you-
Candies, coffees, beans, dairy.
Candies and coffees are already in there.
Yeah, I see that, yep. Oils, pastas, something.
Pastas, yep.
We added nut-
I think we've got quite a bit, I think you have, we've added, we put a lot in there that you wanted, except for some of the things that we're gonna write down right now, Jen.
And we had nut butters, which is peanut butter, almond butter, blah, 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 blah.
So is that, so you want to add those?
You have to say something that, to me, reading between the lines, it's in there, but-
If you want me to read between the lines, I'm more than happy to. I just don't want to come in front of you, have to do a special permit, and, and a month later, when you come, you-
I, I get it.
Wait a minute, if that's not what I pictured it being.
I, I understand what you're saying.
Nut butters, no problem.
What else, what else? Keep going, what's the next one?
We had the local uncommon tradesman.
No, that's, that's a problem.
I can't have knives on school property. Is it prohibited? Can't do it. Sorry. I won't deviate on that one.
But we, I mean, and I understand that. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not going, but it, we can go to Town Park where they're not, which is part of the property that Larry-
You can do that.
Right, so I don't wanna exclude it. And I would have no problem saying to you, in the special permit process, we are not going to include this because it's in a school, but-
You gotta be very, very, very careful. If it's in the school or within a certain confined area, and again, it's been three years since I've been on the board, so I don't remember exactly how it reads anymore, but I know, obviously-
Well, again, I, I guess, I'd be-
You're probably-
Going, going back to this being a zoning and we don't know where it could or could not be, in general, I don't mind that use, but I would like that use, that phraseology, whether it was a knife shopper or something else, a tradesman, to not be the major portion, no, not to be the major portion of the thing, such that we, we allowed one booth with, with community outreach or whatever the wording is.
Yeah.
I could see that we would, we could allow one use for, for a tradesman. Then if, if it's on the school property, they can't get it. That, that's just a fact of life. If it goes somewhere else, I mean, if, if we do go to RB, we have to remember that the Portuguese Club actually does fit into that, and they, they could easily do that up there.
Joe, forgive me. Every site that you've defined, and when you referred to adding RB, it was always specific to a school. So forgive, no-
Sorry, go ahead.
But that's what, so far, every, every site that you've defined, and even tonight, has been a school. That's why you wanted the RB. So for me, I can't allow knives on schools. I just can't do it.
But I'm saying, I'm, I'm saying it may not be them that comes before us. Portuguese Club could do a farmer's market if we allow it in RB.
That's right.
So why wouldn't we set up the zoning? The, the naive issue is outlawed by the school itself.
Correct.
Why wouldn't we have wanted to allow that if the Portuguese Club came before us and wanted to do farmer's market?
Right.
And that, and that's, that's where we'd be going down the path if we allow that. Because I'm, I'm not looking at it being only this group.
Okay.
It could be anybody else.
And I'm-
And, and as long, I, I, I agree with you, the school shouldn't back off from that and they shouldn't be allowed to do that, so I would assume that that's what happened.
And they wouldn't do that anyway. I mean, knowing, knowing you all, I'm sure that you would, you would follow the right, correct-
Put knives unless on school property, then.
Well, it-
Or local uncommon tradesmen.
Well, I would say, yeah, we can allow one, one tradesman as part of this, just like we did, to me, doing one, one tradesman like we did to the, to the thing, is a lot.
Unless on school property. I, I, I'm, at least I'm covering myself.
No, and I agree with you. If that's the case, that's the case. But, you know, there's even a parcel of land that was brought up that's, this little funky little area that's behind Town Park and next to the school.
I know exactly what you mean. I do know.
Yeah, so it-
I know that area very well.
It's not actually, it's town property, well, they're both Town Parks.
I know what you, I know what you're talking. I know what you're talking. So, so how are we, how are we doing so far? Are we, are we?
We're up to knives. We're moving along.
Well, yeah, I would rather it not be knives. I'd rather it be tradesmen.
So I think we kind of-
Well, there might be other things besides knives, I guess, that they could have, so I don't, I don't wanna-
Well, put tradesmen, but you have-
I think the word tradesman is-
I just feel more comfortable if, specific to knives, that at least it's added that it cannot, it's not to be allowed on school property. That's all I'm asking for. Uncommon tradesman's fine with?
What if we, because, because I believe there's, there's other things that schools probably don't allow, per se, which is, which is alcohol's, do, do we wanna say if this is done on school's property, it, it needs to meet school, the school requirements?
Alcohol's off the list, so that's kind of a moot point. I, I mean-
Well, alcohol is, I'm sure, I'm sure guns are too, but I mean, there, there may be a list of things that-
Guns, knives, I mean, wanna get into, you probably can't have chewing gum, but I think outside, you're fine.
Well, all right, all right, all right, guys. I, I get what you're saying, Jen.
Well, what's, what's the next item?
So the tradesman is gonna be on here?
Uncommon, yep.
Uncommon, okay.
And then we have local artisans.
What is that again? I forget. You know, I like just, I like-
Handmade-
Things.
Things.
Little baby clothes, hats and gloves and scarves and stuff like that.
We have two.
That goes along with the jewelry, correct?
Right, and that's why in the first one, we tried very specific and say, no, we don't wanna allow it to be a major part.
I don't like, I don't particularly care for that.
It's a farmer's market.
It's part of us, though.
Can I, excuse me? Can I answer that?
Well, there's too many people asking me.
I know. I'm just gonna sit back here.
Kate, do you wanna say something?
I don't think it qualifies within, again, I'm referring, I go back to the mission statement that you guys provided to us. So I look at your own mission statement and what you're trying to do, I don't see how hand knit products qualify inside the realm of a farmer's market. I just don't, I don't get there in my mind.
If you consider them as being locally produced, that's, I think, that's, that's part of the umbrella.
And it's small, we're here for small businesses and community building.
And if you wanna do that, then you gotta stay in industrial. So this is where, this is where, you, you know, you kinda have to, you can't have it a hundred percent.
The small businesses are in storefronts on Main Street, and they're, and they're paying overhead. They're not at a free site.
I'm a small business and I have to pay the town one and a half times the tax rate just, just to be, just to operate in this town. So I understand, but there's certain things that you can't do in a residential. I can't operate in a residential. And unfortunately, my job is, if you wanna survive or you wanna operate like that, then where you are presently is the correct, because there is no restrictions. But when you wanna start operating more as a business model, then we have to be careful what we allow in a residential.
Is there a category for a microscopic business that's just starting out? For example, somebody literally whose entire line is like twenty-four square meters.
I would suggest that they do it out of the house online under the radar.
Okay, yeah. One more.
Can I say something?
Sure.
My husband and I belong to seven farmer's markets, including Milford. And at every farmer's market, eighty percent is the farmer's market.
Right.
And then twenty percent is an artisan. The man who sells the yarn makes mittens or scarves or whatever.
Right, right.
The person who makes the clay sells vases. They're only allowed to be there a certain time. One, they, so if you have a market, you can only, you have to have eighty percent other things and only twenty percent the other people.
Okay.
And they're only allowed to come once a month.
Yeah.
So it's, so they can't come every month, so you can say the hand knit guy is here every month.
Right.
You don't, you don't do it that way, because what you're trying to do is bring people to come for the honey and the chocolates and the cheese and everything else. That is just an added bonus for the people who have, have so much honey they can't shop anymore.
Yeah, they would, they would like something else to purchase. I understand what you're saying, right, okay.
If, if that's what you're, what you're going for, then I, I have no problem adding my one statement of tradesman or artisan, one, one at any one time, but that's it, one.
So one, one is-
You get the knife shopper in one week, you get the clay guy the next guy, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, so every week someone else-
And that goes back to exactly-
God love you if you can manage that.
Well, that works out to work.
I do. And the thing is, is that in the original draft, I said no more than ten percent, which was literally two. And I'll even, it was, it was, the ten percent was two based on the numbers that we had last year. And I'll even, it was, it was, the ten percent was two based on the numbers that we had last year. If you only want one, we can do one. That was why.
So you'll have a jewelry person one week and then you'll have the yarn guy another week, and then you'll have so forth and so on. So every guy gets a turn at a booth where he can be able to sell his whiz. All right.
And yeah, I, this is.
It's like watching Charlie Brown at the booth.
You should see the calendar I have at home. This one's this week, this one's this week.
So is this, so how are you doing there?
We'll have it.
We were doing.
Joe, Joe, I think came up with it.
So one, one, uh, local uncommon tradesman or artisan per.
Per, per.
Per weekend?
Per week.
Per Saturday?
Yeah.
Well, effectively, I think they're gonna come with a site plan that shows, that shows a location. We're only gonna allow one locate. The location's gonna have to be defined for an artisan or, or tradesman, and we're gonna have to see where that is. And that's only gonna be one booth on, on the plan when they come before us.
Right.
Per, per market day.
Per market.
That's what it's kinda do, right.
Per market is the word. Yeah.
So I think, I think we're good, Jen, huh?
Um, yeah, we just need, um, we, we have to take the word homemade out. Nothing is homemade.
Talk to them.
Nothing is homemade. That's very true. You're right.
There is nothing homemade and I don't want to construe that that is acceptable because the Board of Health who issues the permits requires that if you're preparing food, it's in a commercial kitchen.
Right, that's right.
So, I mean, other than the fact that.
Jen, you want it?
I know.
Okay, so we'll, we'll, we'll take out the homemade out.
Item.
Okay. Okay. So, you know, we have to have a public hearing and everything, Jen.
My only objection, oh, you still have, go ahead.
Unfortunately.
I may have two objections then.
Do you want to go first?
No, 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 I'll wait.
You promise?
Okay, Jen, let's go.
It's, there's a section in that says who have raised the vegetables and then being offered for sale. Um, as long as we're clear that the vendors who are making food are not growing the vegetables. Some of them are.
That's why it says cooperatives.
I, I don't think.
It's not.
That's not a big deal.
I'm just, I'm just clarifying that that needs, cause.
I think you're reading into more than.
Well, there are, there are markets that are producer only that require that, so as long as we're clear that.
We are clear, yeah, all right.
Well, you, did you have an objection?
My only, uh, my only hesitation, my only problem is I would still rather either keep it the RA or the RB district. That's my only other problem.
I, I want to just say yes. It concerns, it concerns me that.
And, and I could be a jerk and say I want you to stay right where you are.
I know.
Again.
Okay, so what we're gonna do is.
Are we adding the RB district then? Right now it's not there.
No, we're not adding that right now.
I guess I'm not alone.
No, we're not, we're not adding that. So what we're, what we'll do is Larry will take this information and he'll rewrite.
Oh, he's just gonna add.
Add, I mean, he'll add the things that we talked about, and then, um.
What about the months?
Do we plan the public hearing? When is the public hearing up?
The months are, hold on a second, the months are staying the same, June through October, or did you?
Yes, we're gonna leave it at June, June to October.
The public hearing.
You want to back it down to May? Some beautiful Mays. Mother's Day.
Great day for plants, Memorial Day.
Talk to your colleagues.
My anniversary, you gotta go to May.
Oh, you gotta come, go to May.
All right, why don't we go to May?
May.
May to October?
May to October.
Consensus of the board?
Okay.
Yeah, yes.
I'm here to help.
Yeah, and, uh, so what about the, uh, uh, public hearing, Larry?
It's gonna be.
There's one other thing you want to work out.
Yeah, there, sorry.
Provided, provided that, uh, this is all gets out of then, I, I think the only other thing you want to work out is whether you want the planning board to sponsor it, cause I think.
Oh, that was the last thing.
Right, I'd recommend that the planning board sponsor it if you can, can manage that. Which I assume you can.
We would clearly appreciate it.
Yeah, it would be wonderful.
It would be a good thing for us to sponsor it that way. You know, you got everybody on board and, uh, that sort of thing. So.
I would appreciate it.
The, uh, notice is gonna go out on the thirty-first of this month for a public hearing on the twenty-first of April.
So the twenty-first of April.
Public hearing night.
Will be the.
Right after Tax Day.
I know. Will be, uh.
Right after Patriot's Day, right after Patriot's Day.
Yeah.
So planning board will sponsor.
That will be the pub- public hearing on the twenty-first of April, okay? And so, uh, you'll input these, these additions and, um.
Minor corrections.